Meeting on May 15th, it is 6:00 PM and we're going to go ahead and get started and call this meeting to order and we start all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, the town is broadcasting our meeting as they always do and this is our customary check in the audience to see if anyone else is recording the meeting this evening. We have three individuals recording the meeting, so we'll take this time to just invite everyone that is here to either exit the hall if you would prefer not to be recorded, or if you would prefer not to speak, that's your prerogative, but please do know that there are at least three recordings taking place tonight as well as the town's broadcast. All right, before we get to our public comment section, I have a quick question for the audience. Is there anyone here this evening, here for our Monty Tech graduate recognition? The Winchandon School Committee invited graduates from Monty Tech that happened to be residents of Winchandon to come to the school committee meeting to have, to be recognized by their hometown. Is there anyone here for the recognition for Monty Tech graduates? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. All right, that brings us to our public comment section of the meeting. A couple of quick notes before we get to our public comment. This is the time when anyone in attendance is welcome to address our board. Thanks to one of our townspeople, someone let me know about a Superior Court case that happened that changed the public meeting rules for open meetings, so you are here and I know you know who you are, so thank you for that. Due to the Massachusetts Supreme Court decision, the regulations around public comment periods have been further defined. To assure that all voices are heard and comply with Mass General law and the Superior Court decision, I will outline those guidelines for everyone now. Each attendee is welcome to speak for up to three minutes at a time. Each attendee is welcome to speak up to two times. All comments must be addressed through the chair, so that means that comments can't be addressed to another individual in the audience or another member of the board. All comments, unlike previously where we used to say that all comments had to be related to items on the agenda, that is no longer the case. The change that happened with Superior Court is that all comments do not have to be related to items on the agenda, but do need to be related to items that are within the jurisdiction of the school committee. And the jurisdiction of the school committee is the hiring, evaluation, and supervision of the superintendent, establishment of the district budget, and establishment of district goals and policies. Superior Court goes on to say that the First Amendment allows broad constitutional protections to speech during this time. However, it has been ruled that free speech does not allow for any threats, fighting words, or obscene content. I assume that's not going to happen tonight, but that's what the Superior Court said. And all speakers are encouraged by the court to represent their remarks in a respectful manner. Written comments are also accepted. Written comments are especially encouraged for any comments that are over three minutes, so if you would like to make comments that are beyond three minutes, we invite you tonight, or any night, or any day, to submit written comments to the chair. My email can be found online, or you can leave them here tonight. The public comment period is not a discussion. Members of the board and representatives of the school are asked to listen and not respond to information during the public comment, so there won't be a back and forth or a question and answer. It is possible that any questions or concerns that are raised during public comment this evening may be addressed through tonight's school committee meeting, or after this meeting in some other form. Whew, that was a lot. Apologies for the boarding speech. So, that opens up our public comment period, and we welcome anyone to come up to the microphone. Please do identify yourself and feel free to address the board on any topics within the board's jurisdiction. Who would like to, who would like to speak? Sir? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Austin Lassard. I'm a sixth grader at Murdoch Middle School. I'm a higher on student, and I'm in student council. I'm on the Murdoch track team, and I'm now going for my third round of IEP testing. My first was in fourth grade before COVID, but it was not completed due to COVID. Then I had it last year where the testing showed I had a specific learning disability. In spelling, I was offered no extra help from anyone at Toy Town even though me and my mom both asked for extra help. My question to you all and the Director of People's Services is why I was not offered extra help. I'm a student that cares about my education and now has the confidence to speak up for myself and others. What programs do our schools offer to kids like me that know they need help and want help? What help is offered to kids that don't qualify for IEPs? What additional help is offered for kids being taken off IEPs? If I am willing and wanting to learn and I am asking for help, why are your schools not helping me? At Murdoch Middle School, Ms. Vazina uses the Summit program. This program helps kids like me learn in the classroom independently. It has allowed me to achieve straight As when I never thought that'd be possible. The middle school teachers make sure to help us in all areas that we are studying before we test. The Summit timeline helps me learn time management and plan my daily assignments. At Toy Town, I did not feel supported by my teacher. I would ask for help and my teacher would forget and she would go back to her desk. My sixth grade teachers make me feel important and make me feel like I matter. I'm an identical twin and Ms. Vazina even took the time to learn how to tell me and my brother apart. She gets to know all of her students. At Toy Town, I was just another number, just another student. At the middle school, they care about each of us and encourage us to ask questions and ask for help. And that is why I'm here today. I am here to ask for your help for myself and other students like me. I shouldn't have to explain why I'm getting tested for IEPs. My family shouldn't have to share my test scores publicly, but there's no other way to get the Director of People's Services' attention. I feel supported at the middle school level by my teachers, Summit, and most importantly, Ms. Vazina. Although I am doing great now, I still struggle with spelling and want to improve. Thanks to my teachers that actually care this year, I have. I want to make sure going forward, I'm still supported as much as I was this year, as that has not always been the case in your schools, for myself and so many others. Ms. Vazina and the sixth grade teachers have helped me by the, me be the best me that I can be. You took away Ms. Vazina, and although I still have my teachers, the additional support that Ms. Vazina offered is no longer there, and that concerns me for next year. I'm finally doing okay in school, and I want that continued support that she offered. I hope Ms. Vazina and the sixth grade teachers know how much of a difference they have made in my education and confidence, and I hope they know how thankful I am for, for all of them and that they have made me like learning again. Thank you for your time and I hope you take what I said into consideration.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I know we're not supposed to have a discussion, but I just want to say, great job, Austin. Thank you for coming here.
Sir, would you like to go next?
What I have to say is going to take a little over five minutes, so I would like to speak my two segments of three minutes concurrently, and I expect that all in attendance would support this and welcome me to do so. My name is James Mercier, and I have spent the last six, sorry, nine months teaching music in Winchandon Memorial. My contract has not been renewed for next fall, and what I am going to say regarding that should concern you all. After parents, teachers are usually the most influential people in a person's life, and that influence goes on to shape who we become as adults. I want my daughter's teachers to be passionate for what they do because I want them to inspire her to be passionate too. I want them to be professionally ambitious and have pride in what they do, because I want my daughter to have ambition and pride in what she does. I want my daughter's teachers to be highly knowledgeable of what they teach, because I want her to value and respect being highly knowledgeable. I have done everything that I can to be that teacher here in Winchandon, and it has been easily recognized en masse by the students, the parents, the teachers, and the principal. The resulting explosion of musical energy and ability in the students at Memorial is simply fantastic. Your second graders are achieving more now in their music classes than has happened at any other time in this district, and I challenge anyone to watch one of the performances next week and disagree, because it is objectively undeniable and obvious. I have done what I set out to do without failing. There have been no stumbles along the way, no problems or issues to point to that could justify my contract not being renewed for next fall. There has been no reason or explanation given at all. So I am simply not what Thad King is looking for in an educator, and there is something wrong with that. In the absence of failure on my part, I suggest to you that the failure is his. In Thad King, I see a superintendent that confuses a teacher's passion for malicious dissent, confuses a teacher's professional pride and ambition as a challenge to his authority, and confuses a teacher's knowledge into being an insult to his intelligence. After anonymously surveying your classroom teachers at Memorial, two-thirds of them felt comfortable answering, and here is what they see in Thad King. When asked, I will say actually, one individual did write threes down the line, so we'll set that one aside for the sake of brevity. When asked, my superintendent is an effective leader, all teachers unanimously disagreed. When asked, my superintendent makes consistently effective decisions, all teachers unanimously disagreed. When asked, my superintendent seeks to share important information with me in a timely manner, all teachers unanimously disagreed. When asked, my superintendent values my input in perspective, all teachers unanimously disagreed. When asked, my superintendent is responsive to teachers' ideas, requests, and suggestions, all teachers unanimously disagreed. When asked, my professional effectiveness has suffered due to my superintendent's leadership decisions, all teachers unanimously agreed. And when asked if the quality of education their students receive has been negatively impacted by the superintendent's leadership decisions, all teachers unanimously agreed.
Mr. Mercier, if I could just pause you for one moment. You have reached your three-minute moment. I suspect the crowd will let you continue, but please allow me to check. Would anyone else like to address the school committee at this time? All right, go right ahead, Mr. Mercier.
If and when this problem is eventually ignored away, nothing will have been won at this level, because it will be a loss for everyone. I hope to see some of you in attendance next Thursday.
Who else would like to address that? Yes?
IEP evaluation from January 2022, anger control clinically significant.
Miss, I'm so sorry. Could you just say your name and move the mic a little closer to you? Thank you so much.
Chelsea Harris. Anger control clinically significant, bullying at risk, developmental social disorders at risk, emotional self-control clinically significant, executive functioning clinically significant, negative emotionality clinically significant, resiliency clinically significant, internalizing problems at risk, behavior symptom index at risk, externalizing problems clinically significant, adaptive skills at risk, hyperactivity clinically significant, aggression at risk, conduct problems at risk, anxiety clinically significant, depression clinically significant, adaptability at risk, social skills at risk, leadership at risk, activities of daily living clinically significant. This evaluation resulted in the following diagnostic considerations: Attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, autism spectrum disorder, persistent depressive disorder, and major depressive disorder. The diagnostic category should be considered for differential diagnosis. Students' parents may wish to consult with his pediatrician, a child psychiatrist, or a child psychologist about the results in order to get an accurate diagnosis. Now, this is where I'm a little confused, because the school has already been made aware that my son has been, for the last three years, diagnosed with ADHD, depression, and anxiety, and also sees a psychiatrist and therapist. Autism questionnaire filled out by teacher 2023, April 2023. Please describe the child's relationship with peers. He has difficulty relating to other students. He feels no one likes him. He plays alone. Moderate difficulty in functioning usually shows impairment in settings. Loses temper, is angry or resentful, blames self for problems, feels guilty, feels lonely, unwanted or unloved, complains that no one loves me, has difficulties organizing tasks and activities, loses things necessary for tasks or activities, has little desire to master new skills, unable to tell time, days of the week, months of the year, can't repeat himself, can't repeat information, has difficulty copying written material from blackboard, has trouble verbally expressing thoughts, depends on teacher or others for repetition of task instructions, is forgetful in daily activities, all of these came back as occasionally. Appears afraid to try new things for fear of making mistakes, feels worthless or inferior, has distinct periods where mood is usually irritable or unusually good, cheerful or high, which is clearly excessive or different from normal mood, seems unaware of others' existence and uninterested in interacting with others, fails to give close attention to detail or makes careless mistakes in schoolwork, has difficulty sustaining attention in tasks or activities, avoids dislikes or is reluctant to engage in tasks that require sustained mental effort, is easily distracted by extenuous stimuli, has trouble learning new material in an appropriate time from age skills, knows material one day but does not know it the next, has trouble holding several different things in mind while working, has trouble following multi-step directions, all of these came back as often. Appears fearful, anxious, or worried, appears self-conscious or easily embarrassed, appears sad, unhappy, or depressed, these came back as very often. Mathematics, concepts, handwriting, punctuation, grammar, somewhat of a problem. In your opinion, what areas of the child's functioning need the most improvement? Social skills and self-esteem. Please describe-
Miss Harris, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I'm so sorry. Just give me one moment. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Thank you. Go ahead.
Please describe any other concerns you have about this child. I am concerned that he seems to have very few friends. Also, he seems sad sometimes. That was from his teacher. Email from child's teacher, May of 2023, and I have many more just like this. He seems to be getting on the nerves of a few students recently. One, that's extremely offensive, when there's no support in this school system to help him. Student has been a little silly with things he is saying and doing, and the other students haven't really resonated with his brand of comedy, attention-seeking. There have been a few little arguments where I have to ask the students not to argue back if they don't like what the student is doing, and student has needed to focus more on his tasks instead. I wouldn't say that he has been particularly angry or upset at school, though. He does do more on his own these days, though. He will choose to sit and work alone. This email was in response to me asking if he was struggling at school, because for two weeks he has been crying, begging not to go to school, and extremely angry when he comes home. My child's 11. He's not a little kid. He's not Memorial. He's 11. My child has been denied an IEP three times, and your Director of People's Services cannot really give me a reason why. If he had been put on an IEP when I first brought my concerns to the attention of the school, we would not be in this situation now. Why are you refusing to help my child? Why are you failing my child? I was told my child did not qualify because academically he does well. Here's two weeks of the last, here's the last two weeks of assignments he brought home. He failed every single one of them. They're all failed. They're all failing grades. He, here is the picture he drew in therapy that he has to attend once a week because of the struggles he's going through. It's his school monster. This is how he feels attending Winchandon School System. This is not a good picture. This is sad. Why is this school refusing to help my child and the children like him with any support? Because they are different? What makes these children different, weird, what makes these children weird or different? That is their strength, and they should not have to change because this school does not have the right staff to help them. We would, we should be offering these kids the support they need to let them become the amazing and incredible young adults they have a chance to be, but by denying them what they need now, you are denying them a bright future. Not only did I just spend $5,200 on a neuropsych, because according to your Director of People's Services, a diagnosis from a PCP and a psychiatrist is not enough. I just spent another $3,000 on a lawyer for her to tell me not only was it illegal to deny my son an IEP based on his evaluation, it was also illegal, because my son is on a 504 plan that is not followed, for the principal of Toy Town to kick him off the bus in March for the rest of the school year. By the time I am done, I will have spent over $10,000 fighting the incompetence of your administration, and I have already filed four complaints with Desi, and you can expect a lawsuit shortly. You have a psychologist, psychiatrist, therapist, and a lawyer stating that what has been done is illegal and that my child needs better than what this district has done. We will also be fighting for an out-of-district placement to somewhere that sees the good and brilliance in my child, because it is obvious that this school does not.
Thank you for that. Would anyone else like to address the board? Yes?
Hello, my name is Alexa Lassard. I am Austin Lassard's mom who just spoke.
Miss Lassard, I'm so sorry. Could you just move the mic right to you? Thank you so much.
Perfect.
Really? Please continue.
In recent weeks-
We can take a timeout.
Thank you.
Sorry, Miss Lassard. Go right ahead.
In recent weeks, I have spoken with all of you and have asked you all for help, and I am still at a standstill. Every single response I have gotten from the school committee has referred me back to the school. They have told me to use the channels within the school for help, even though I have proven time after time again via email that these channels they speak of do not work. And then it dawned on me. Majority of you do not have kids in these schools currently. You must not know how these channels work, so let me show you. Please raise your hand in this room if you have experienced our SPED department to be in non-compliance, not follow your child's IEP, or have other issues in the last two years.
Miss Lassard, I need you to address your, oh, Miss Lassard-
Please raise your hand if you are satisfied with the Director of People's Services.
Miss Lassard, I need you to address your comments to the chair, please.
Please raise your hand if you have not received help by the administration when you have called out, when you have called them about the SPED department or bullying. Your channels don't work. They don't. Stop referring me back to your channels and do something before I have a lawsuit on your desk next week. The community channel does work. You have almost 300 signatures on that petition. We want answers and we want them now. Our kids want our principal back and we want you to do your job. Stop worrying about the personal relationships that you have with Mr. Thad King and start advocating for these kids. That is what you guys were all elected for. Put your personal preferences aside and stand by these kids, because when he's away at job interviews looking for a new place to work, we're all still going to be here. Our kids are still going to be here, and you will be left with angry parents. Do your job and do right by these kids.
Thank you, Miss Lassard. Would anyone else like to address the board?
So I am handing you an email that is from Desi. It is from Danny Rustovi Kelly. She is the district manager for Central Massachusetts and oversees our district.
No, she just, you don't need any, you don't need.
Last, or I'm sorry, last school committee meeting, we were told that our SPED department is undergoing an evaluation, that it's a very typical evaluation that happens on a calendar cycle. But it came to my attention after reading through years worth of school committee minutes that we shouldn't be on that cycle. It hasn't been six years. In fact, our three-year mid-year cycle, or mid-cycle evaluation, I guess is what they call it, happened in the 2021-2022 school year. So why would we be facing another standard evaluation this year? Or not? The evaluation that's being done, according to the director of this district, is not the scheduled TFM, tiered focus management, maybe, evaluation. It is not what we were inclined or led to believe that it was at the last school committee meeting. It could be an oversight, maybe a misunderstanding, maybe she's misunderstanding, but I would like to know why we have an evaluation going on with our special ed department that isn't regularly scheduled by Desi. The schedule for the school committee, the school districts to be evaluated is publicly posted on their website.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
My name is Christina. I was here the last school committee meeting to talk about the need for more mental health training. Right now, my son's in middle school, but I can see a need for it across the whole school district. There was a woman that came up after me, offered free services for free training for staff in this district. And then we had a gentleman that presented his findings on bullying surveys that had gone out throughout the district. I was very disappointed to see in the minutes or the agenda today that there are no topics of discussion to kind of hash back what the plan is for those poor ratings on, you know, the bullying topics, as well as to not see that there's been anything being addressed, because clearly from a lot of, you know, the parents that come up when you, when you're talking about special education, they all have a mental health component. And if we don't have proper training and mental health training for the staff that are interacting with these students, you're not doing any justice and it's really inappropriate. So again, I am coming up here because I was really disappointed to not see on the agenda any follow-up from the presentation from last week and how the district was planning on addressing and how the district was planning on addressing the needs for that.
Thank you. Who would like to address? Would anyone like to address the board next? Please.
So it appears as though that we have quite a few problems that are being communicated to the school committee about things that are happening in our district. Whether it be a lack of communication, administration that have taken personal leave or been placed on leave, or are just no longer with us. Our athletic director, which I'm gonna address at an entirely different meeting for you, who got an applause when she walked in here. She is not worthy to keep, by the way. All of these things are happening in our district. Sped is in shambles. And if you guys haven't gotten that message, I'm not really sure how else to give it to you. And I understand the four jobs of the school committee. You've done a great job at making me understand that, Ryan. But one of your jobs is to manage him. He works for you. So at the end of the day, how are we gonna carry on a reorganization of this district? If you don't have a superintendent, should not have the sped director that we have, but let's just say that she's here because it's irrelevant, and we don't have a principal in the middle school, likely not to have one in the high school soon, and we're gonna reorganize this district? Do you guys really think it's a great idea to go, "We might have a problem. We're gonna have to hire a new superintendent. Hope you can come in and reorganize our district"? I'm sure you don't think that. You might. You shouldn't if you do. But someone should reconsider maybe putting that on hold. I think the vote was to support the reorganization. I don't think there's a legal reason that I can find, not an attorney, just talked to one daily these days, that maybe you couldn't put it on hold because I think there's a lot more bigger fish that we need to start working on with this district than what building our students are in. And I wasn't against the reorganization. I think it is absolutely ludicrous to think that that's something that this organization or this committee should do at this point in time. And quite honestly, I think it's irresponsible of all of you sitting in the chairs that you're sitting in.
Thank you, Ms. Ketti. Others. Welcome.
My name is Kelly Harris. I have a son at Toy Town. I volunteered my time, which is a precious commodity, as I'm an administrator at a school and a licensed special education teacher, to sit here tonight in support of our students. The things that I am hearing and seeing blow my mind. I was on the planned committee of moving the students to the middle school. Our students are held accountable to MCAS. Our teachers are held accountable to their evaluations. How are we going to evaluate this redistricting plan? That is not clear to me. Nor have there been any proactive things shared with the students or the parents. And that was a part of the committee that I dedicated my time to. I also would ask this district to consider some of the more pressing problems that are facing us versus a redistricting without a clear plan in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others. Yes.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Borogard. I have a, the parent of two children who are in the district, one at Memorial and one at Toy Town. So I guess I'm coming here with looking for a bit more transparency and answering questions. I obviously, as a parent, get all the information from the schools, and I read them diligently. And one of the first things I noticed when we were looking at the district reorganization was the bullet point in there that there was gonna be no budget cut across the particular things. I can't remember the exact wording. But in the last couple of weeks, I've heard from a lot of staff members who have been let go and, you know, changes and shifts, and they don't seem to align with like, this teacher's not doing well, and so they're moving. So I had the opportunity to work with James Mercer before he was in district. I'm also a teacher, and I worked with him in another building. And full stop, he's an amazing educator. He just is. He gets kids, he understands kids, and he makes them excited to learn. He had an amazing program, and I, and my son, I actually sent him a video one day of my son just singing in our house, just singing over and over the same song, and like, to different intonations in his voice, and it was just really cool to see. So he's an amazing teacher. I know other personnel that I've heard have been let go that have been in this district for a while, and their positions have shifted over time, and that, it just not seeming to add up as to why some of these changes have been being made. So I don't really have a specific thing, other than like transparency. Why are these changes being made? Again, I don't think necessarily it's horrible to go through the reorganization, but right now, it seems like decisions are being made that are gonna hurt our students, not help. And I'm just looking for some clarification as to why we're making these choices because it's not supportive of our students. It's just really unclear to me. So I'm asking for the future for a little bit more transparency about why someone like James was not renewed, why we made this claim that there was not gonna be any cuts across bargaining units. And it appears as there are. I know that in Toy Town, the PE teacher hasn't been there since the middle of the year, and that position is apparently not being replaced. So how is this all happening? How is this not equating to budget cuts across bargaining units? So I'm just looking for transparency, so that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Others. Do you mind? Yes.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Finley. I'm a resident, an alum. I've been a track coach for 20 years. I was asked not to speak multiple times today, but I take it upon myself to speak for feeler of retaliation because I'm an employee at large. I'd like to believe, based on the applause that I got, that my thoughts on this hold value. I have three kids that are coming up into the school system, as well as I've graduated one who is a Division I athlete at UMass Lowell, National Honor Society in the school. I have put a lot of time and effort. I had the opportunity to leave town, go elsewhere if I wanted to, but I feel that a close community is what I value the most in here. Over my time as a coach in this school, I've seen a lot. And what I've seen is a revolving door here. And you people are responsible for that revolving door. Not you guys, but the people that sat before you. I've seen multiple high school principals come and go. Year term here, three-year term here. Nobody of any weight, no De La Santas grandfather or uncle. But the only person that has been a consistent role in this school system is one Mrs. Vazina, who is also a friend of mine, who- who is also a friend of mine. I did athletics with her in high school as well, and I grew up with her. As a matter of fact, she was a very, very close friend of mine, I'll say that. I have seen her, before her child was in my program, I saw her up at the school, at the athletic competitions, valuing her time with these kids inside the building and outside the building. What I haven't seen with the adverts of the superintendent when he was there, he was a great principal. I value him as a friend as well. But what I'm seeing is the building coming apart. I see the system coming apart. I see, and I hear that the superintendent of schools is applying at other positions, is a finalist at other positions. I see that the principal is applying for jobs in a different place. So we're basically dismantling everything we have. And I haven't even touched on the athletic department in itself. I see everything collapsing, and I see negativity around this school. For the first time in 20 years, we're an eyesore. The school system is falling apart, and it's your jobs to correct this and to fix this. I most likely may or may not have a job next year, and that's fine because, as I've told people, I'm probably gonna coach for free, and you're never gonna get rid of me. Because my son, and I was excited for it, was coming up into Miss Vazina's middle school next year. And I was happy and ecstatic because she did wonders for my ADHD son in her program that she developed at that school. When they said that they were bringing the fifth grade in there, I was a little worried, but I knew that they were gonna be fine because Miss Vazina was gonna be there. What message are we sending to these kids? That, now, I'm not privy to what happened at that school system, but you make a mistake, and we chop your head off right then and there. You need to learn from your mistakes. You can't get in an argument with a superior and get your head chopped off. You need to value the time and effort and the ability to have a conversation as an actual adult and say, "This was wrong. This is how we can learn from this." Every single kid at this school, what they're seeing is they're seeing somebody that they love and treasure just getting axed because she may or may not have done something that was wrong. We don't know because there's no, as the last person said, there's no clarity. There's no transparency at this school. It's, "We can't talk about this. We can't talk about this." On the topic of the AD, because it does affect me, I've seen three ADs in my time there. One was my high school track coach-
I'm so sorry. Could I interrupt you? I'm so sorry. Would anyone else like to address the board? That's a resounding yes.
I got three minutes. I got roughly an 800 from a middle-distance runner. Jenna's been there longer than anybody I've ever dealt with. And Jenna has been great at her job. She has allowed coaches to develop and run. And let's face it, Jenna gets paid the less out of probably anybody in the entire state to be an athletic director at Murdoch High School. And she's there because she values the fact that her kids are coming through there. And she values her coaches, and she lets her coaches run their programs and become successful. There are kids through these programs and through these schools, much like the music teacher, which my kid absolutely adores, and I'm saddened to see him go. Great teachers and great people are being let go. For what? Because somebody doesn't agree with them? And we just get rid of them day one? It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense that we're eliminating positions, and the people that are in charge of these positions may not be here next year. It's your responsibility on this panel to see that there's an issue here and put who you like and who you don't like aside, and do what's best for this town, this small community. Now, at the end of the day, my kids are gonna go to this school because my wife and I both graduated from this school, much like some of you did. But you need to look and you need to say, "This is wrong. Something needs to be fixed." At the end of the day, probably what's gonna happen is nothing's gonna be done with this. But we're gonna be minus a superintendent, minus a middle school principal, minus an athletic director, and also minus a high school principal. Nobody there to lead because nobody wanted to do the right thing. You didn't wanna listen to the parents that showed up every single day to these meetings and tell you, "There is something wrong here. You're in charge of this. You were elected by us to do what needs to be done." What needs to be done is we need to start from scratch. We need people that have invested interests in this community, leading the community. We have that, but we're letting them go. Who's gonna take this job? This job has always been a stepping stone for every single person except for the AD and the middle school principal. You cannot name one person that lasted longer than five years, except for Thad, because Thad's been here for a principal and superintendent, and acting superintendent. And my time and my interaction with Thad has been fantastic over the years. All right? And I will make no punches. It may not come to, you know, everybody else's who actually can't stand the guy, but I enjoy my time and my interactions with him. But the fact of the matter is this, is the two people that are let go have a vested interest in this community, and you're letting them go. You're allowing somebody who does not have a vested interest in this community, who didn't graduate from these schools, whose kids aren't being brought up, who those people had the opportunity not to send their kids to our school system, but are. I thank you for your time, and please do the right thing for my children and everybody else's children in this room.
I'm having a really bad problem with the online, the live video. It keeps, I have to reboot it. It's breaking down in there. I got a backup, so I can post that tomorrow. But I'm pushing the button every time it goes out. I try.
Is that caged as well?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I'm doing the best I can to keep it going. We got New York City order book. I'm recording it, so that will be on.
Okay. Thank you to our last speaker. My apologies for the interruption. Just so everyone is aware, everyone is aware they're having technical difficulties with the broadcast, and therefore the video continues to be down from the broadcast. However, the meeting is continuing to be recorded, and the recording will be posted when they're able to do so. And she is working to get the live feed back up. But right now, we are still working with some technical difficulties. Thank you again, sir. Other folks that would like to address? Yes, I'm sorry.
I don't really have anything prepared, but I am a parent of a seventh grader and also a parent professional at Memorial School. I, as well as everybody else in the school and in the district, have, are feeling very put out, very unheard for everything that's been going on in our districts. This redistricting plan is not what we need right now. We need to get things back in order. We need to get our key people, people that have been here forever and care about our students, our principal at Memorial, our AD, our principal at the middle school. These are all people, our music teacher, sorry. These are all people that have invested their life. John, Mr. Mercer hasn't been here long, but he is invested in the school, in our district. And it's, it kills me to go into school every day. It makes me wanna look for other positions because I've heard nothing but lies. I unfortunately was on the hiring committee for Mr. King, and I am very sad that I did that because I'm not happy right now. I'm not happy with the way the school is going. Everything is just, just very discombobulated. It's just not working, and you're gonna start losing more people. It's just not right. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you. Others. Sir. Ms. Harris, I'm terribly sorry. I can't invite you back to the microphone. You already had your two moments. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I can't have you speak again, Ms. Harris. I apologize, I really do. Is there anyone else that-
Can we make a motion to let her speak?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Does anyone have a problem if she speaks again?
No.
Do you have a problem with my watching your superintendent? Why do you have to police us? Police him, so he can speak.
Would anyone else like to speak? I'm sorry, other than Ms. Harris.
I would say so. I have a middle school child. He is on the track team with Finley.
Ms. Harris, I'm gonna try to be polite. I really do wanna be polite to you and recognize that we do-
The only reason that we have not filed a lawsuit with Desi and hired that kid before this was because of Mrs. Vazina. She already, six months ago, seven months ago, had a plan for my child to succeed. And I can tell you that my middle school child comes home and says, "What a mess this school district is right now. You cannot learn in class. You have kids starting fights, throwing bricks at windows."
Thank you.
Can we let our chairman run the meeting, please?
For- So, folks, I, we really do wanna hear you. That's why we do this. I also do wanna keep, you know, a semblance of order within the meeting, and so I am gonna ask that anyone that has spoken twice, I am terribly sorry, I can't invite you back up. But of course, anyone that would like to speak or hasn't spoken twice is absolutely welcome, and we will stay all night if we have to to hear everyone.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Karen.
I'd like to make the motion that if somebody wants to speak a third time, that they be allowed to from now on.
Second back for discussion.
We have a motion and a second to change, to observe different rules for the public opinion, excuse me, the public comment section. Is there any discussion?
I will tell you that honestly, and I have made this, this comment before, that I think that especially when we have people coming to us, that we need to hear them, and that putting, I understand that you want the three-minute time limit, but that is something that we have put in place. We do not have to- We do not have to abide by that, there's no law, there's no regulation, that is of our own making. So if we wanna bend the rules, we can. So I think that at any given time, we can make the exception, and I think that we should be able to do that. So I think that we should, especially when we have a crowd and we have parents coming to us speaking from the heart, we need to make these exceptions. So going forward, I think we need to think about how we do that, just as before I have said, we could do more than one public comment period. But that's for another discussion.
Other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I understand Ms. Cass's motion, and I'm in sympathy with it, but we have a large crowd here tonight. We have a lot of, we have a lot of people that could speak. I mean, if you wanna be here till four o'clock in the morning, I'll stay, but I don't think that's gonna work. Can I speak, please?
Easy, Greg.
We've tried, we've tried to be as polite as we can, and I will continue to be as polite as I can be, as it calls for, but I just, I don't think... We could be here all night listening to people saying the same thing over and over and over again. We get the message.
You got that.
We get... Anyway.
Want to speak?
Thank you, I appreciate that. We know you're upset, and we know you have reason to be. There's only so much we can do here tonight. We can listen, and then we can act when the meeting's over, but there's not much we can do here tonight. So I just ask that you let us listen to you, that you let our chairman run the meeting, that's what he was elected to do, and that we just continue, and when folks are done with their pair of presentations, that we move on. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Just a brief statement. As you know, I'm newly elected to this board, and- And this is exactly what I need to hear. I need to hear your voices so that I'm able to come up with some type of a solution to the problems that are facing our school district. So I support this motion, I think if you wanna be heard, you need to be heard.
Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, a little discussion to the person that made the motion. I assume that your motion is applicable to this evening only, or are you looking to change policy?
I will keep it, no, because we have to go to policy subcommittee, so I will make it applicable to this evening only.
Very good.
And the second agrees.
So we have a motion on the floor to suspend the policy, I don't know the policy number, but the public comments policy to allow speakers more than two times for presumably up to three minutes more than two times. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
David?
No.
And Greg?
No.
And the chair votes no. The motion fails. That brings us back to our public comment section, and we can absolutely invite, yes?
My name is Kayla Main, I have a child at Toy Town. I think it's really sad that you guys won't allow more people to talk. We've been coming to these meetings for months now, and you guys have done nothing. That's why we're here, that's why we're all here voicing our opinions more. More and more of us are coming out because more and more people are realizing it's not just them having a problem, it's not just their child not getting the services they require. It's your guys' job to help us and to hear us, and by restricting her to talk, you're not listening to her. You're not. And I understand your frustration, because there's a lot of anger right now, and I understand that. You guys need to listen. We elected you to represent us and to listen to us. I really think you guys should reconsider that three-minute rule tonight. Our voices deserve to be heard.
Other comments?
You're hearing the same problem over and over because we're all having the same problem. If you guys would do something, we wouldn't have to repeat ourselves a thousand times over and over. We're having the same problem, so do something about the problem. How many times have I emailed you guys asking for help? Your response, "Go to your channels." My channels aren't helping, so now I'm back here. We wouldn't be here if you guys would do something. You ask us if we're willing to stay here till four in the morning, I think all of us agreed that we would be here till four in the morning to help our kids because nobody else is.
Thank you.
Excuse me if I do not sit, been a long workday. I'm sure Channel A can hear me perfectly fine, 'cause I know how to project my voice. A lot of people have already said what has been needed to be said. I would request that you all take a deep thought on the transitions that are going on right now. We have pink slips going out, we have school restructuring, we have a superintendent that's seeking a job somewhere else, we have a principal that's going somewhere else, another principal that just got pink slipped, music teacher. So I would suggest, as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a father of three in the system currently, as an alumni, that whatever's going on pink slip-wise, restructure-wise, be put on hold until we actually have a superintendent who's gonna stay and see it through. Because if we don't- If we don't, and I wish you luck, Mr. Thad at Bill Ricker, if you get that job, I wish you luck. It's not an easy job, and I get it, stressful. Leadership sucks, and I know the pain, it's a burden, I get it. But, from last meeting, and this is what I'm here to address, not here to throw stones, just here to put facts out that I've seen. Last meeting, there was a presentation about the command climate in the schools. The survey states that the teachers and the staff do not feel that they are supported by the administrative group. I believe with a leadership that should be in place, every teacher and student should feel accepted and not have to worry about consequences. Ma'am, you said your child's different. Am I correct? Different, but should not be treated any different than any other child. That includes everyone that has a 504 or IEP. That is what we were taught in college as educators, are we not? I am educated, I did graduate at Pittsburgh State with an education license, I just chose not to pursue it. Bigger and better things came up for me. I'm not angry about it, but I do have my lessons from last time. Last meeting, presentation, command climate survey, schools, students, and teachers felt that the things were handled different depending on the student. Why, is my question. If everybody in the student, staff, or teachers, or administrators treat us the same, why are we having fights break out and students are not getting in trouble? Discipline is key, especially with growing minds. If we do not discipline them now in school, they're gonna run amok, and we have that going on now. After last time's meeting, the very next day, a kid got sent home from school for making verbal threats, the school was not put on lockdown. Parents were not notified until after the situation was handled. Good to go. I'm glad that we at least got notified, not a problem with that. Same students are making the same threats, nothing's happening. One student that actually does not do anything wrong makes one mistake, and they're crucified. It happens, I get it. But that's a leadership issue that we need to attend, not just you, but us. As parents, as taxpayers here, we need to police our own. We can't just put all the shift and blame on Thad King or the administrators, but collectively come up with an idea to make the solution better for every child in our district, not just the ones that we love.
Sir, I'm just gonna interrupt you for one second, if you don't mind.
I'll take my next three minutes after this.
Okay. Anyone like to address the board? All right.
Mr. Chair, could I get his name, please?
Oh, your name?
My name is Admiral Blum. L-E-B-L-A-N-C. First of my kind. All right, going back onto the pink slips. With all these slips going out, all these teachers are going elsewhere to seek further employment, and music teacher? I wish I had you, I wish my kids had you, 'cause you sound like a great guy. What is, what is coming back in? We're letting people out, what are we coming back with? What is this district gonna do to entice that younger generation, that college grad or that seasoned veteran teacher? What are we doing to have those people come to this district? We're laying a lot of people off, but I'm not seeing any replacements coming in. Now we're gonna have teachers that have thirty students to one teacher with a pair, maybe, 'cause they don't get paid worth of crap. So, sorry, if I offended anybody. But we need to have a formulated plan on, hey, you know, we're laying X, Y, and Z off, we got A, B, C coming in to fill in that spot. Not like the last time when I came in here and asked, "Why was there a history teacher teaching physics?" And now we're halfway through the school year, do I have my kid redo physics, or do I suck it up and pay for it in college? I'm gonna do what's best for my kids. What it's coming down to, ladies and gentlemen of the board, parents out here, I got great coaches that coached my kids, I have great teachers that taught my kids, but what it's coming down to, and I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, if there's no change by the end of this school year, I'm pulling all three of my children out, and I'm gonna put the bill on this district, and I'm gonna put them somewhere else, where I know they're gonna get that education. It kills me to say that, as an alumni. It kills me. With my last comment, and I'll leave it brief. When the school fails to do leadership, issues that cannot be maintained due to competency, and the state decides to step in because we are under the ten percent, and they take over the school board, and they take over the superintendent's job, which they're supposed to do, according to Desi, and according to General Law 12, Chapter 69, Section 1 Kilo, the determination of the district's chronic and underperformance designation of receiver, creation of turnaround plan, and annual review, failure of municipality to fulfill financial responsibilities. If we listen to the crowd tonight, we see what's going on, we're in that cusp right now. We're walking that fine line. And it sucks to see it as an alumni, as a parent, that this school district that I was so psyched about my kids coming to and doing sports in is failing. So please, not a shot at anybody here, but fix the schools, fix the issues, stop determinations until we figure out what's going on with Mr. King, if he's gonna stick around, okay? If he's not, hey, best of luck to you. But I think we should just halt everything. Two, communications keep going down, the public is not seeing this live. I think that this should be until everything else is fixed, paused, reset for another day, until the communications come back down. So that way, the people that can't make it here have the ability to at least see it live. That's all I ask. I thank you all for your time, I wish you all luck on your decisions, and have a good night.
Mr. Blank? Others?
Good evening, my name is Samantha Olivera, I am a special education advocate, I've lived in Winchton for twenty-two years. I'm also a special education segregate parent for kids who are in DCF custody, and I'm a parent contact with family ties. I have been up to my eyeballs in special ed for about fifteen years. But what I wanna talk to you about is our, the reorganization of the district, and I think, I'm also a substitute in district as well. The social-emotional issues in our district need to be met for these kids. You can teach them in every new way that comes, that they come up with, but if we're not reaching their social-emotional needs, they're not gonna learn, they're not gonna grow. And it's an epidemic, it really is. It's an epidemic. And I mean, we have some issues that are, you know, with my family as well, I get that, but you need, we need to address these issues, 'cause a brand-new building is not gonna help these kids, nothing is, if we don't address these issues, they're not going anywhere, and it's gonna impede their learning. And that's all I need to say, thank you.
Yes? Oh, no, okay. Others? Yes? Hi.
Hello, Joy Cap, I'm just gonna make this short and sweet and kind of back up wherever he went, what Adam said. I have four children, one graduated six years ago, Winchton School System, one is a senior next year, but to graduate through Winchton School System. And I have two younger ones, both in Toy Town, and this is the first time ever, I am now considering and looking elsewhere, ever. And it's really sad to say that, I'm looking at private school, redistricting, like, anything I can. Can I afford private school? Absolutely not. I work very hard, three jobs. But it's, that's the point we're at, and I shouldn't have to be, I shouldn't have to be at that point, and I don't wanna be. All their friends are here, we're invested in the town, but this, it's gotten to that point where, you know, again, like Adam said, we'll be sadly leaving the Winchton School System soon, if things don't change, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Yes?
Hello, my name is Erin Boucher, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight in fear of losing my position and fear of retaliation, but I have been encouraged by the parents and former students that I've had in the past. Like I said, I've been in this district seventeen years, I absolutely love my job, I love my students, and I love my families, and to hear-
Thank you.
And to hear what is happening to our students is disheartening, it's not okay. And I think that we really need to look deep into everything that is happening in our district, and I think we need to look at, as some of the parents said, what we're starting to change, and look at, is this best for our students, is this best for the families, and really sit back and take a moment and take that pause and take that break, and really look at, if what we're going to be moving forward with is not what's best for our students, then it needs to stop. And we need to really take in account that some of our littlest students with this reorganization are now gonna be placed into an old high school that is not fit for them, it is not made for them, it is not allowing them to be able to grow. And I know that's kind of off-topic from where I started, but I wasn't going to speak tonight, so be patient. But I just, I just feel that, as a teacher in this district too, I need to advocate for my students who can't advocate, for their littlest minds and their hearts, just please take into account what everyone is saying tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Amanda Dak, and I have been a resident for twenty-three years. I have five children, whether I'm a bonus mom and/or their mom, but I have five children, okay? That's nineteen years in this district. I have only had one, now I have two sets. I have the bigs, I have the littles, okay? And ten-plus years difference in separation. What a difference, what a change. This is current. Now, for my eight-and-ten-year-old, okay? This is not okay, coming in as a parent, wanting to do the best you can because you knew at one time, ten years ago, it was a- knew at one time, ten years ago, it was a wonderful place for your children to be. It was everything. And now, this is falling apart. This is not okay. When your children say, I don't wanna go to school today, I'm not really sure what's going on, this teacher's not here anymore, why is this happening? Why is, you can't answer that, there's no transparency. We don't know what's going on, we have no idea where things are anymore. But I can tell you this, is that in my older set, I have a child, will be twenty-one this year, he's been on the spectrum as diagnosed for the last thirteen years, okay? He was one of the original children to be part of Can Do, which is part of the UMass Chan system, okay? That is the Center for Autism and Neurodevelopmental Disorders, okay? We went there, and he was finally diagnosed under the old, um, Director of Pupil Services. He was pushed aside, said, no, he's wonderful, he's great, um, he gets along socially, because I never let him hide who he was. Be of the person you are, but the school district then did nothing to support him. He also has Crohn's disease. We spent a total of forty-five days in the hospital when he had sucrose mitoph placement. Do you wanna know that he was only point four-five off out of forty-five days missed, which is pretty much the whole entire term, of getting high honors? This is my child on the spectrum, okay? He graduated from Monty Tech because he couldn't stay here anymore. And I fear this again, when I hear all these people, I didn't expect to talk tonight, I wanted to sit, but he had to leave because he didn't feel supported. He never, we never got an IEP because he was too bright. I didn't know, I didn't know what I needed to have for my child then. Yes, he was wonderful in school, he did what he needed, he did not need the educational backup, but you know what? He should've had a 504. He never got that either. The second we left the district, he went to Sizer. Within three days, he had an IEP done. Three days, because I had paper from Can Do, which this town had, and they never even used it. He graduated thirteenth out of three-hundred-and-seventy-one kids from Monty Tech. He was number one in his electrical class, and he is thriving in what he's doing. And I have no doubt in my mind that it's because he pushed himself to go somewhere else. But now, you talk about my younger children, and my ten-year-old, just recently, we have gone to Mass College of Pharmacy down in Worcester, because he was having vision issues. Now, as a parent, when you know that something's wrong, and he's already had glasses since he was four, you need to find out what's really happening. I took it upon myself, because I didn't wanna blow smoke up somebody's butt, even, yes, but, when, um, when I knew from my first child wasn't getting what he needed for services here in this town. So you bet I'm gonna go and show you. Come to find out, he has spatial issues, um, perceptual issues, he's been diagnosed and being ready to move over for vision therapy, which I am paying out of pocket for, for twelve sessions down at the college, because we're still in the evaluations process. It's still, I've had the educational evaluator call me, oh, he's very bright, he's great. Okay, can you tell me what he got on his, on his information? I have nothing. I have nothing.
Dak, if I could just interrupt you for one moment, just to check with the crowd. Anyone? Thank you.
Okay. Um, I have gone, I have done what I could beforehand, and now I'm here paying for twelve sessions every Thursday to send him down to Worcester and to get this done, so that he can find out whether or not he's dyslexic, whether or not he has dyspraxia. I don't know, but I knew in my gut for the longest time, and this was even before COVID, and again, because I make sure my kids are social, and I can have probably, any parent back here know, I am the social butterfly, that is my job, and I will make anybody happy and do what I can. My children will be the same way. You're not gonna hide in a corner because you feel uncomfortable at the moment, we're gonna learn and go through this. But in this being right now, he's afraid. He's afraid at school, because he doesn't know anymore. He knows he feels different, he knows he's not getting the help that he needs, but he has a teacher that again tells him, he's wonderful and bright and a joy to have in class. But that's it. When you ask the teacher in a parent-teacher conference, can you help me? Can, can we work on this? What's going on in the class? I don't know, I have twenty-three other kids in the class, I, I don't really see what you're, what you're saying. Are you directing this question towards me? Well, yeah, this is a parent-teacher conference, what's happening in the class? It's just not right. Everything is falling apart. You take my bigs, my littles, this is not the same school district that we had once before. This is not. And Jess, Jess was a godsend to my son, my oldest. He understood her. He knew that she was that safe place in that small, little, tiny office when she first moved in over up there, and she helped him with anything that he needed. And now to know she's gonna be gone because of a TIF, this is not okay, because that was my safe place. That's where I knew in this reorganization that my son, who is learning and trying to advocate for himself that I'm different, something's wrong, help me, she's gone. You're taking away people, you're, you're, this is not right. I'm pleading for you to understand me. Five children I've had in this district, five, one a hundred percent was failed. Are we working on number two? Like, just please, think about what you're doing and look real hard. This reorganization is a disservice to now my third and fourth, uh, fourth, fourth grader going over back to Memorial. Oh, good, she gets a coat hook. Oh, good, she gets a pod. What happens to the kids that now you know, and I know what happens at Toy Town? A kid will get angry, and they'll wanna go, and they've pushed things and thrown things. You have them in a pod. That means the entire pod is now disrupted, because a child is having their moment. And yes, they should have their moment, because everybody's entitled to that moment. But that doesn't make it safe for anybody. Let's talk about toilets, let's talk about, in two thousand sixteen, that playground at Toy Town, I helped fundraise for that, and I fundraised like crazy. What are you gonna do? How do you, and I don't know budgets, I don't know anything about that, but you're just gonna pick it up and move it? What about my soon-to-be fifth grader that's going up to the high school?
Ms. Dak, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you just need to wrap up.
Okay, sorry, uh, one, what about him? He needs recess, right? Kindergarten through fifth grade, I do know, but I can't tell you what it is right now because I can't think of my head. There is a law saying that they need to have twenty minutes of recess. What are they gonna do with four patches of grass between concrete and a walkway? Wh-where, where are they gonna go? They have no basketball court, they have no soccer area, they have no playground? Yes, you wanna say, okay, let's reorganize, because everybody else is doing it, but do we even have the space to give these children? He's, he's a child, they're fifth graders, they're supposed to be children.
Other, other comments for the school board tonight?
Hi, my name is Melissa Daly. I'm a parent, and I also have a child at Toy Town Elementary. I really think you need to stop the organization. Um, my daughter comes home, she's in fourth grade, and she is so scared to go up to the middle school. She asks me every single day, mommy, am I gonna get bullied? Every single day. I have worked with, I have been a sub in this district before I was a parent, and I will tell you, COVID really, really hurt these kids. They were in first grade when COVID hit, and now they're in fourth grade, and you really need to look at not only where they are, like their, but their maturity, and some of them are just not mature enough to go up to the middle school next year. Not only that, but I have fielded with the reorganization that we still haven't justified the lunch, the busing is a big, big concern for me. You wanna put my fifth-grade daughter on a bus with high school kids? That really, really scares me, and she is very scared, and I don't think that should happen, and you haven't really justified, you know, if there's any solution to that, can we get another bus, can we do this, can we do that? You know, like Amanda said, they're supposed to have recess. What, are we gonna stuff them in the field with nothing? So, in, in closing, I really feel that you guys really, we really, as a town or whatever, need to stop the reorganization and either come up with a better plan, or maybe in a couple of years, figure it out.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
I just wanna piggyback on the whole bus situation thing. So, I have a son at the middle school, again. Um, this year and last year, so my son is in eighth grade this year, last year, seventh grade, he was physically assaulted by high school students, both occasions, and one in each year. So I'd like to just put that forth, because I think that that's a very valuable statement that she made about a fifth grader being on a bus with high school students.
Thank you for that. Other, other comments tonight during our public comment period for the school board?
You all underestimated us, you underestimated these town, these kids, and these teachers, and these parents.
Thank you. Uh, all right, thank you, everybody. Once again, uh, for those of you that have been at, uh, three meetings in a row now, I apologize for the repetitive, repetitiveness of what I will say, uh, but for those of you that are new, uh, thank you, uh, for coming out tonight. Uh, this, this is one of the best ways to communicate with your school committee, uh, and you've, you've had now the opportunity to not only share, but hear, uh, from others the concerns that exist. Uh, and I, uh, commit to you, I think on behalf of all of the other committee members, including, uh, those that are new to the board, that, uh, it is impossible for us not to hear you. That's why we're here, is to hear you and to, to allow us to be informed in a way that we can't almost any other way. Um, so, once again, thank you for coming out tonight, thank you for sharing, I appreciate you.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, Karen.
I'm sorry, just before you continue, during, at one point, you had asked that people send, um, their written testimony to you. I would make the request that you send it to all of us, to be sure that all of us get it, um, because at times, you know, whether, for whatever reason, it doesn't always get to all of us, so I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Uh, okay, it, uh, it feels a little out of order, because we've been in the meeting for an hour and a half. Uh, however, uh, we are welcoming tonight our newest board member, Mr. David LaPointe. Uh, Mr. LaPointe, would you like to say anything?
Sure. I just wanna, um, thank all of you, uh, that supported me, and, uh, for those of you that didn't support me, um, I'm here, um, you don't see it, but my sleeves are rolled up, and I'm ready to go to work for all students. I'm a proud alum of Murdoch High School, and I see some of my fellow alum out here, and, um, this is why I'm here, you're why I'm here, your students, your children are why I'm here. And what I'm hearing is that I've got a lot of work to do, and I'm, I'm pleased that I'm gonna be working with my board members, and there is gonna be transparency. You're gonna know what we're doing at all times, and you're going to see results, because we all need to be a part of the solution, not part of the problem. And I see out there today, and, and out in, in the TV land, um, that people are very concerned about what's happening in our schools. Uh, I'm a product, again, of the school system. I've seen our schools in a state of perpetuity and reorganization. I was one of the first groups of Head Start students here in Winchonan, which was now being called the Early, Early Literacy Center. Um, I went through all the neighborhood schools, I went through the changes in the, the middle school, I was the last seventh-grade class at the, uh, which is now Toy Town Elementary. So for the past forty, fifty, uh, years, uh, that's all I've seen, is that we're changing schools, and we're changing, uh, the environment for all, all the students, we're mixing and we're matching. I was very fortunate, fortunate to spend ten years in a, in a, in a school district in our neighboring town, although my blue, my blood is blue, I was a teacher for, at Oakmont for ten years, you only need to go across the line, travel ten, ten, ten miles. And what do they do over there that's different? Why are they so successful with their MCAS scores, with their college, um, uh, you know, admittance of their students? And they'll, they'll show you, it's simply two things. It's the way their school is structured, K through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve. Two-tiered, two-tiered bus system, so the middle school's on a different bus system, no, no middle schoolers are on buses with, uh, with the high schoolers. And I, I, and the, and then the second part of that is the parents, because that's who this, you know, you are their first teachers, you are what make it easier for our teachers. For Mrs. Boucher, right, it makes her job easier when we're involved like this and our voices are heard. So please, I hope I'm not talking out of turn, but keep active, keep letting me know, don't let me forget, don't let me slow down, I may be getting a little bit older, but I want to be a part of this solution, I wanna make this the best school district in the area.
Uh, okay, uh, that brings us to, uh, oh, I meant to say that, uh, on one of the days that, uh, uh, we didn't have all of our members with us, uh, we also recognized Karen Cast, who, along with David, uh, was recently re-elected to the board, so congratulations. All right, that brings us to the reorganization of our school committee. Uh, this is something that is obligated, uh, of us, uh, when a, an election occurs. Uh, and because we have had an election, and we have new board members, we do have, uh, the necessity to reorganize our board, or, or choose to reorganize our board. Uh, so tonight, we will be choosing, uh, let's see, we will be choosing the chairperson for our school committee, the vice-chairperson for our school committee, and the subcommittee appointments. Uh, and I will, uh, begin by letting, uh, my fellow board members know that, uh, one of our board members could not be here with us tonight, uh, but she has indicated her willingness to serve on any subcommittee. We do have the prerogative to nominate her and vote her in if we see, if we so see fit. Uh, so, we will begin with nominations for the chairperson of the school committee. Nominations for the chairperson must be made by mem, a member of the school committee. Uh, the chairperson will be elected by a majority roll-call vote, and the members presented will be voting. If no nominee receives a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void, and nominations will be reopened. Uh, happy to accept a nomination for chairperson of the school committee.
Mr. Chair.
Greg.
I, I think you've done a fantastic job chairing these meetings, especially recently, and I would like to renominate you for, I'd like to renominate you for the position of chair.
Thank you. Uh, we have one, I, I accept, we have one nomination for chair. Any other nominations for chairman for, of the school committee? Okay, uh, we'll do a roll-call vote. Uh, Karen?
I'm abstaining.
And David?
Aye.
And Greg?
Aye.
And the chair, uh, humbly votes for himself, which feels weird, uh, to say, uh, aye. Uh, up next is the election of our vice-chairperson. Uh, the procedure for this election will follow the same as electing the chairperson. Happy to take nominations for the, uh, position of vice-chair of the school committee. Uh, I will nominate, uh, I will nominate Greg Vine for vice-chair. Uh, Greg has served in the vice-chair role for the last ye, one year, uh, and, uh, I nominate Greg. Other nominations for vice-chair of the school committee?
Aren't we supposed to have seconds for nominations?
Probably.
Yes.
Let's do that again. Any nominations?
Actually, we were supposed to have a second for your nomination.
All right, let's go backwards. I withdraw my nomination of Greg. Sorry, folks. Uh, any nominations for chairperson of the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
Greg.
I would nominate you for the position of, uh, chairperson.
Thank you. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All right, those in favor, Greg?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Karen?
I'm still abstaining.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Nominations for vice chair of the school committee, I nominate Greg Vine. And do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, the roll call vote, Greg?
Again, it feels weird, but aye.
Oh, I started with you, sorry. David?
Aye.
Karen?
Abstaining.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations.
Thanks.
That brings us to our subcommittees. For those of you that are in the crowd, the subcommittees were attached to the agenda that was sent out, so apologies for those of you that may not have them with you, but we will go through them individually. Our goal is to, tonight, assign representation to all of the subcommittees. The subcommittees will turn over now that we have had a reorganization of the school committee. Our subcommittees are the policy subcommittee, negotiation subcommittee for custodians, negotiations for secretaries, negotiations for paraeducators, and negotiations for the Worcester Teachers' Association. We also have a subcommittee for communications, wellness, calendar, sick bank, townwide audit, capital planning, finance, and the Monty Tech representative, as well as two representative seats to our consortium groups, which are CAPS and Keystone. And it has been tradition that we recognize the Monty Tech representative, who is for the town, that is Tamara Estes, and the CAPS representative of the superintendent and the Keystone representative of the superintendent. However, although we don't have the prerogative to change Ms. Tamara, of course, if anyone would like to make any nominations, self-nominations, or changes, now would be the time. So, we'll start it with, anyone interested in the policy sub, oh, yes, Karen?
I'm sorry, but you misspoke and said the negotiations are for the Worcester Teachers' Association. It is for the Winchandon Teachers' Association. Just want to make sure we have that clear.
Apologies, I spent a lot of time at work in Worcester. Apologies for that. Nominations or self-nominations for the policy subcommittee?
I would like to nominate myself for policy, and you, if you want to be back on it with me.
Okay, we have nominations of Karen and myself for policy. Any other nominations for policy? If you don't mind, we're going to try to fill this and then vote it all through at one time. If folks want to break it up, we can do that as well. Negotiations for custodians.
Mr. Chair.
David, thank you, and Greg.
Yeah, I've done it for the past several years. I'd like to stay on that.
David and Greg. Others? Very good. Negotiations with the Secretaries' Association. I would like to nominate myself. And any others?
Didn't we both do that last year?
Yes.
So, we can, I will nominate myself for that again.
Okay, Ryan and Karen, any others? Very good. Negotiations for our Paraeducators' Association.
Shall we do it again?
All right, it was Ryan and Karen last year. We can do Ryan and Karen again.
Sounds good.
Alicia's getting off easy here.
Yeah, we should throw her into something.
Negotiations for the Worcester Teachers' Association. Wow, for God's sake.
Really?
Sorry. I am sorry.
We can nominate anybody you want for that, because they're not here.
Nominations for the negotiations...
I'm going to say you nominate Tracy Novak for that.
Westminster teacher, no, I'm just kidding. Winchandon Teachers' Association, I'm sorry, she's sitting right there.
Who was on it last year?
Mr. Chair.
Last year, does anyone remember who was on the Teachers' Association last year?
It was myself and Mr. Murphy.
Go ahead.
And I was just going to say, I'd like to stay on that negotiating subcommittee along with whoever would like to join me, Mr. Lapointe.
We have Greg, I'm, David? Very good.
Before we go further, can I ask what committees Alicia has been serving on, so that we know?
Yes, it's going to take me a couple of minutes to find, but I will find it. Anyone else have that? Anyone else in the room?
I'm looking.
Possibly finances and communications?
Yeah, I believe so.
She was on communications with me, which never...
Okay, last year, Alicia was on the communications committee, wellness committee, finance and finance committee. Communications, wellness, and finance. And therefore, I nominate Alicia for the communications and wellness committee.
Unless anybody else is interested in communications, because I am nominating myself for that, so in case anybody else is interested.
Okay, Alicia and Karen for communications. Anyone else for communications? All right, wellness, last year was Alicia and Karen. Any nomination, we have Alicia already, any other nominations for the wellness committee?
I will do wellness.
The calendar committee is one of a few that only has one representative, that is the...
That was Larry.
Poor Larry.
That was Larry last year. Any nominations for calendar subcommittee? I'm going to nominate myself. Capital planning, nominations for capital planning?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'd like to remain on that committee if I could.
Yep. Any others? All right, nominations for sick bank, this was one that I did before, I'm happy to do it again if no one else would like to. Any nominations for sick bank?
It's yours.
Finance, last year was...
David's getting off really easy, too.
Taken all the ones I wanted. No.
For finance, the finance subcommittee, last year was Alicia and Ryan. I'm happy to give up my seat for anyone that would like it. So, we have, we've gone ahead and put Alicia. Any other nominations for finance?
I'll put myself in.
David, very good. Townwide audit committee?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
Frankly, I'd like to ask David if he'd be willing to sit. I think he'd be a good representative on that.
Good auditor, sure. Is the pay good?
Yes, double last year.
Okay.
And last but not least, is our Monty Tech representative. Monty Tech representative.
I'll do that one.
Fantastic. That is David. Any, we cannot change Tamara, as I said. Any desire to change our representative to the consortium groups, CAPS or Keystone?
We can't.
I know. Well, we, yes. Okay, so, I'm going to run...
Mr. Chair, just, sorry, I just want to make clear to David that just because we've said we want to do things, you can, if you want to do one of these committees, was there another committee you were interested in, because you did say we were taking all the ones you wanted?
I guess I wasn't sarcastic enough.
You were, but I just want to be very clear.
I'm good, I understand that we're all alternates anyway, correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If somebody can't make it.
Yes.
Yes, and so, let's make that clear. I'm going to accept a motion in just a moment, so please, please listen to the list, and then we'll accept a motion if you all agree. The policy subcommittee for 2023, 2024 will be Karen and Ryan. The negotiations with the Winchandon Teachers' Association will be Greg and David. Negotiations for custodians will be David and Greg. The negotiations for secretaries will be Ryan and Karen. Communications will be Alicia and Karen. Wellness will be Alicia and Karen. Calendar will be Ryan. Sick bank will be Ryan. Capital planning will be Greg. Alicia, excuse me, finance will be Alicia and David. Townwide committee, David. Monty Tech representative, David, and CAPS representative and Keystone representative, the superintendent of schools, with the continuation of our practice of all school committee members being alternates to all subcommittees. If there is agreement, yes, Greg?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the committee appointments as presented, or subcommittee appointments as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the nominations or subcommittees? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Karen?
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you. Tonight, we have a consent agenda, which includes a couple of items. The first item being your minutes. These minutes were emailed to you a while ago. They are also in your packet. These are the minutes from the April 27 meeting. Are there any questions about the minutes or corrections?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'd make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented for April 27.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the April 27 meeting of the Winchandon School Committee. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, we'll do a roll call vote and start on the other end. Karen?
Aye.
David?
I abstain.
Good move. Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that is three, two, zero, two, one. Thank you. That brings us to the second item in our consent agenda, which tonight is the all-program leadership class field trip request, and I will turn that over to superintendent to tell us a little bit about that.
Sure. I think it's just, the reason it's in front of you is it is an out-of-state trip, which is required, you know, your approval is required. This is a trip between a class led by Ms. Frye, one of our high school teachers, in combination, her leadership class, in combination with our all-room, as a part of, something that they had selected together as a part of their best buddies inclusion event. So, it is in New Hampshire, so they'll be going together, the all-room and the leadership classroom will be traveling to New Hampshire together. That's why it's in front of you tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I have to ask before I make a motion, or before somebody makes a motion on this, where is Crumble Cookie, New Hampshire?
I don't believe that's a loca, there is no Crumble Cookie, New Hampshire. It's Crumble Cookie in New Hampshire is one of the places the students wanted to visit as a part of the, sort of the reward for this. It's a cookie place, apparently, in Nashua. And then they will be doing an outdoor activity, I believe, at Mine Falls, which is a trail right there near Conway Arena in New Hampshire.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Angelina?
I move to approve the request for the all-program and the Murdoch High School leadership class to attend a field trip to Nashua, New Hampshire as presented.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, those in favor, Greg?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is approved.
And Angelina votes aye, even though she officially can't.
That's right.
I'm also going on that field trip.
Now, we know why you made the motion. Alterior motive.
Did you say you're going on the field trip?
I am.
Hmm.
Is that not okay?
Yeah.
Technically.
Technically, that's not okay?
Would it be offensive if we asked to just do the vote one more time? It's going to turn out the same way?
Go for it.
I don't want, do you mind, folks?
No.
Can I have a motion for anyone that's not going on the field trip?
I can't make the motion. I've been waiting to make a motion the whole time, the whole time.
You get to make, let's see, let's see.
You can make the motion to adjourn tonight.
If we have another one, I'm turning right to you, Angelina, okay? All right, just to protect the integrity of our process, if we could have someone else make a motion to approve the field trip?
So moved.
Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? All right, Karen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ryan votes aye. Thank you, and I'm sorry.
You should have cut your mouth. Sorry.
Okay, that brings us to our superintendent's report, and Mr. King.
Sure, the only thing on here this evening was an update for the reorganization. There's no pertinent information to add this evening, but I would like to just say I've heard, you know, I've heard the crowd this evening, and we'll be taking that under advisement and meeting with the leadership team around that reorganization, so, but no pertinent information to update this evening relative to the reorganization at this time.
No pertinent information.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Karen.
Yes, because I have multiple questions that have come up, and I apologize again for not being at the last meeting because of my work commitment. However, I know you don't have a, I know you do not have an update tonight, but, and as where, as you are all aware, except for maybe David, you were not here, I was the only one to vote against this reorganization, because I had so many questions. And one of them kind of was around finances, and now we are running into finance questions, especially along the lines of why are we laying off people when we were told that there were not going to be any cuts to staff in this reorganization problem, in the reorganization program? So, again, I am going to ask, and I know this is not necessarily, or was not popular, I remember one of my colleagues saying that barring a zombie apocalypse, we should not put off the reorganization, but I'm going to make a motion that we do put a pin in the reorganization because, once again, not just, not because of whatever else is going on as far as the leadership piece of where Thad may be, sorry, Thad, but because there are just too many questions regarding the reorganization in general. So, I am going to make the motion that we halt all of this reorganization until we have a more in-depth plan in place, which is what I asked for from the beginning.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'm going to oppose the motion, and, Greg, Greg, oh, okay, sorry. I'm going to oppose the motion because we have a lot of younger children that were eligible and could be going into the early literacy program that I feel aren't going to be getting the head start that they deserve. Change is always hard. Reorganization is always hard. We've done it before. When we moved the sixth grade up to the middle school, people didn't want us to do that either, and the district has survived, the kids have done pretty well. And I think that it's, if I can...
But, folks, please.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, I appreciate your statement, and it could do better if the kids had an earlier head start with a literacy program. They're a fam, you, I see people rolling their eyes. It's only, it's been proven that an early literacy program, the earlier the kids start, the more likely they are to succeed in the future, and I don't want to leave kids behind. I want to give them the head start that they need, and I'm going to, I'm going to oppose the motion.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Karen?
I understand, but if we just, I do understand your points, but saying that you don't want to leave these children behind that may have had a potential seat in the district. Early childhood, head start isn't going away, by the way. Head start is zero to three, and that is not controlled by the Winchandon School District, that is actually controlled by the state, and we have nothing to do with that. Early learning, early literacy is very important, and I will swear by it up and down. However, as I stated at... However, as I stated at the beginning of this process back in December, the data that shows that yes, it's great, it's wonderful, but we're leaving all our children at the upper levels behind, we're ignoring all our kids that are in multiple other programs behind. And just saying that we shouldn't change, you know, that we, that change is good because we need to do it, isn't a reason to keep going forward with the reorganization that quite frankly has caused so much consternation in the district. And quite frankly, if we wanna go down that path, the path of leadership, we may not have the leadership to actually keep moving it forward, so. If we really want to leave no child behind, and I hate that phrase with so much passion, then let's start that by stopping the reorganization, taking a step back, looking at what we need to fix the district as a whole, and move forward from there.
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'll be very brief, I just wanna say that's the first time I've ever heard of starting something by stopping it, but we can move ahead.
Other discussion?
Yes, I may, so I'm, I'm new to the reorganization effort, and I, I do appreciate what Thad has done to address the literacy issue in our town, but I think we're just simply rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic. Because after listening to everybody here tonight, I think we have a lot of other issues we need to address. We need a rock-solid foundation before we can build upon that. And I, and I just think, you know, putting these kids in my old school, where I graduated from, yeah, is, is not appropriate. If we had a physical building in town, and that's where, I'm sad that we lost Marvin School, but, but a particular school that would be set up for this literacy center. When I went to Head Start Program, it was in the CAC Building, that's where we all went to Head Start. And, and, you know, from what I remember, we, we were pretty stable throughout our neighborhood schools, then into the high school, then into the middle school, and then they built all these new schools. So again, what I'm seeing is just a continuation, it's almost like musical schools, as soon as the music stops, see where the grades end up, I think what we need to do is, we need stability. And, and again, I go back to the proven frame, or, you know, framework for, for a school system. It's K through five, six, seven, and eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. And I've been, I've been fortunate to be a part of that type of a system, and that works best for the kids. And I think that's what we need here in town, and, and an early literacy center is a great idea. But it needs to be done with the proper physical building, and, and that's why I think we need to address some other issues first, and then we can get to that part, and I support this motion, I will vote for it.
Other comments? Other discussion? Alright, I think one of the most important things that we've heard tonight is the parents' voice on the concern about reorganization as it relates to the instability of the district that could be the result of losing staff. Mr., I almost called you Mr. David, sure, Mr. David here. Mr. David just said it well, he said that we need a rock-solid foundation. I believe that we have the opportunity to invest in our kids with a portion of that rock-solid foundation in, in providing them literacy education at a young age. However, in order to pull off a reorganization of our schools, we need to have the right people in the right seats. What's that book about the bus and the seats and everyone being in the right seats at the right place? Right now, we have a superintendent, we have a high school principal, we have a middle school, a memorial school principal, and an early literacy center director. Everyone hopes that there will be a principal at the middle school within a short period of time. And that is why. And that is why with that rock-solid foundation of the right people in the right seats on the right bus, that's the right time to do a reorganization of the school district. I'm going to be voting against this motion tonight, and the reason for that, the reason for that is because I believe in early literacy, and I hope that we can reorganize this district to bring early literacy to our schools. And if there is a change in administration where we do not have a superintendent, or we do not have a principal in multiple schools, then I will be happily reconsidering my, my position on the reorganization. Any other discussion from the school committee members?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask with permission of the ma-, maker of the motion to table this motion until such time that we have a full board here.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a se-, uh, we don't, no, he's asking her to revise it.
I am, I, I, yes.
So you have.
So we can table it, so I don't think we need to, what do we need to do?
You don't need to, no, you can just vote to table it.
Yeah, we can vote to table it.
I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna withdraw your motion and we're gonna bring the motion up at a future time.
Well, then you wouldn't need to have a motion to table, I can just withdraw.
Right.
So I will withdraw my motion at this time and bring it forward at, hopefully, the next meeting.
Uh, thank you, folks, I think that's a, that's a prudent thing for this group to do, thank you to those that suggested it. We are still technically on the superintendent's report, any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, that brings us to the student representative report, Angelina.
Okay, can you hear me? Beautiful. Starting off with some upcoming dates for the district. Tomorrow, May 19th, is our high school progress reports, as well as the junior, senior prom and promenade. May 21st is our freshman bottle and can drive at the high school. May 24th is the middle school and high school spring concert. May 25th is Memorial Schools Memorial Day Concert. May 26th is our district's Special Olympics Tournament at the high school. May 29th, there's no school because it's Memorial Day. May 30th and 31st is our senior finals and rehearsals. May 31st is our junior, senior flag football game. May 31st, as well as June 1st and 2nd, are kindergarten screenings for the district. June 1st is class day, June 4th is graduation, and June 9th is Memorial Fun Day. Starting with kindergarten registration for the 2023-2024 school year. If your child will be five years of age by August 31st of the forthcoming year, they are eligible to enroll in kindergarten. Screenings will begin Wednesday, May 31st, and registration can be completed by filling out the forms in the link listed on the Winchandon Public Schools website. Hard copies of these forms are also available for pickup in the office at Memorial Elementary School. Memorial Fun Day volunteers are needed. The Fun Day Committee is seeking volunteers for the Memorial School Fun Day 2023. This will help run the events that are going on throughout the day. You will not be with your child's class unless they are at the event. Some events are inside and some are outside, it is scheduled for Friday, June 9th. If you're interested in volunteering, please fill out the form linked on the Winchandon Public Schools website. Moving on to Taste of Winchandon. This past Saturday, on the Beale's Memorial Library lawn, youth from across Winchandon, but particularly students from Ms. Frye's Leadership and Citizenship Class, as well as the Murdoch NHS Chapter, took part in volunteering for the Third Annual Taste of Winchon Event. Taste of Winchandon is a multicultural food festival that originated from students at the Winchon School and was taken on by a team of local youth, including Angelina Delo Santa and Camille Hart, current Murdoch seniors. The event is centered around celebrating and highlighting the unique and diverse cultures of Winchon residents, which also promotes local businesses and empowering all residents alike. Students from Murdoch assisted with the event in different capacities, ranging from volunteering to set up and work the activities offered, to coordinating the event itself. The event had a fantastic turnout of over 350 people, and all donations benefited the Youth Change Pinker Program. Thank you to all who attended and dedicated, and our dedicated Murdoch volunteers. On Tuesday, May 16th, Murdoch High School hosted the annual Scholars Dinner. The Scholars Dinner is an event designed to recognize and highlight the academic achievements of our Murdoch students and the hard work that they've put in all year. Our scholars had the opportunity to enjoy a delicious meal in the cafeteria served by our own high school staff, administration, and school committee members. Following dinner, guests made their way into the auditorium for our guest speakers and awards. Murdoch alumni Grace, Jack, and Charlie Melisca were at the guests, were the guest speakers and offered inspiring insight on their time at Murdoch and how it allowed them to achieve their goals beyond high school. In order to be invited to the event, students who have a GPA of 3.0 or above for the three, the first three quarters of the year are named a Murdoch Scholar. Eighty-six students qualified as a Murdoch Scholar this year. Departments may also recognize individuals for achievement. Nine juniors also received book awards given by individual colleges who recognize juniors who have demonstrated high academic achievement and have worked towards the betterment of our school and community. Congratulations to all of our Murdoch Scholars, and thank you to our staff volunteers for serving the food. Murdoch High School sent four teams to the Vex Robotics Competition at Oakmont Regional High School today. Thirty-two individual teams fielded from the schools of Tohonto, North Middlesex, Bedford, Neshoba Regional, Narragansett, Gardner, Oakmont, Fitchburg, that's Marionapolis Prep, and Murdoch High School participated in six qualifying rounds. Then the teams were ranked in a bracket-style tournament was held. The goal of this year's competition was to score the most points by tossing small discs into a target, stomping, stopping your opponents from doing so, turning colored spinners to your team's color, and occupying the most physical space in the last 10 seconds of the competition. Murdoch's team of senior Yang Yu, Chen, and freshman Aiden Pimentel took first place. The other students who competed today were Camille Hart, Frank Cosentino, Cohen Veu, Charles Watson, Fredette, and Patrick Bouchard coached by Mr. Collins. This is the trophy that we received today. This is the first senior, what did you say to me? It was the first event that not only have we won, but we've participated in for our seniors here, so it's a very big accomplishment, and congratulations to all of robotics students. First championship that we have participated in. Tomorrow, May 19th, is the Murdoch Junior Senior Prom as well as the Promenade. The Promenade will be taken, taking place at 3:30 in the Murdoch High School Gym for high school seniors. Please, if you have a chance, come by to join the receiving line of our students before prom to see their amazing outfits, as well as to cheer them on for what's to come after graduation. Ninety-six students and 10 staff members will then board buses and leave the school at 4:00 PM sharp and arrive to the Hornblower Sensation or a Boston Harbor Cruise. The boat will be departing at 7:00 PM and returning to the dock at 10:00 PM. This event was made possible by a generous grant from the Murdoch Trust and District Attorney Early's Office. Our middle and high school spring concert will be taking place next week on May 24th in the Murdoch High School Auditorium at 6:30 PM. Please stop by to show your support for the Murdoch Music Program. Our students have been working hard all year, the performance will showcase our very own Murdoch Select Choir Band and Choir Classes. College Visit. Murdoch Do Enrollments Program will visit UMass Amherst next week on Wednesday, May 24th for a campus tour and lunch, northeast, and as well as Northeastern University on Friday, June 9th. Special Olympics. Murdoch High School will be hosting a School Day Games Event with Narragansett Regional High School District on Friday, May 26th. Students from pre-K to grade 12 and beyond will participate in a number of stations hosted by Murdoch partners from the middle and high schools. A rally and opening ceremony will be held in the afternoon, Thursday, May 25th, for Winchon students. And then we have a service learning trip. The Travel Club will be taking off to the Dominican, the Dominican Republic to participate in Bridges to Community with members of HEAL from June 10th to June 17th. Students and staff will be engaged in building a home and creating a mural for the school. Participation by students was made possible by a grant from Murdoch Trust and Robinson Broadhurst. If you would like to help sponsor this endeavor, please contact Ms. Rondo. And finally, Senior Softball Day will be Tuesday, May 23rd at the Murdoch Softball Field. 3:30, not what I said. And that concludes my report.
Great report, as always, very comprehensive, good job.
Thank you.
Yes?
Sorry, quick question, what time does the, um, May 26th Special Olympics start?
You say noon? It's all day.
Well, and, like, they started.
It's starting at like 9:00.
9:00, okay. Okay. It was great last year, I just wanted to know, because I wanted to make sure. Will you be there?
I will be there, I'll be volunteering.
I'm looking forward to Promenade tomorrow.
Me too, I am also.
And you're gonna have enough time between 3:30 and 4:00?
Um, students who are attending prom are allowed to be dismissed after 11 o'clock, so you have to stay until 11 o'clock, and then if you have appointments, you're free to leave.
And then Promenade's at 3:30 and you're boarding a bus, I don't know, that Promenade was pretty fancy last year, so.
It won't take long.
I don't know, they made it pretty fancy last year, so, we'll see.
Other questions for Angelina? Thank you, appreciate you. Uh, okay, that is our student representative report, that brings us to subcommittee reports for which I'm not aware of any. Are there any subcommittee reports tonight? No, no, nothing? Alright, and that brings us to new business. We are at the recognition for our Monticrist Regional Vocational Technical Local Graduates from Winchon. Has anyone joined us during the duration of the meeting from Monte Tech?
They probably ran out of here.
Not, not seeing any, happy to take a motion to pass over this item?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Alright, those in favor, Greg?
Aye.
And David?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. New Business 11B, the food service bid, we'll turn it over to Ms. Babinski.
Sure, we have a brief update today, but we will ask that we move this motion to the next meeting. We are using a new template that Desi has put out for our Food Service Management Company. We received two outstanding bids, and we are in reviewing those. We noticed that there was some omissions on the conversion chart for scoring for the valuation of those. We have reached out for Desi for some clarification, I've been working on that for a little over a week, but hope to resolve that by the end of the week, so we're just not prepared to move forward one of the, the proposals at this time until we have clarity on the conversion chart.
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'd make a motion that we table this item until the next meeting.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on tabling 11B to our next meeting in three weeks, I think? Any discussion, not hearing any, Karen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ryan, the chair votes aye, and it is passed unanimously, that will be tabled. That brings us to item 11C and the superintendent evaluation update. As the committee knows, one of the three primary functions of the board is to hire, supervise, and evaluate the superintendent. It is that time of year, we are getting close to the end of the fiscal, not fiscal, the academic year, and it is time for us to do our evaluation. As you know, we did an evaluation last year that was much more formative. Since last year, we have had the plan to do a summative evaluation, a more comprehensive evaluation for this year, and therefore barring any requests to do otherwise, we will presumably do a summative applic-, uh, summative evaluation. Earlier in the week, you were emailed your summative evaluation report. This is the document that you will have the prerogative to complete to identify the items within the su-, the superintendent's evaluation. uh, the items within, uh, the superintendent's evaluation. You also receive the Evaluation Rubric. This is the document from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that provides descriptions of the superintendent's practice for the twenty-one indicators of the standards of effective leadership, and articulates the specific responsibilities that we might evaluate. Uh, that rubric is, uh, a standard template, statewide template, not template, a statewide rubric, uh, for you to use for evaluation. Of course, uh, your evaluation is not limited to only those things, uh, but you have the prerogative, of course, to, uh, to evaluate on the things that Desi recognizes as the functions of the superintendent. Also sent to you, uh, earlier in the, uh, earlier in the week, is the District Improvement Plan. Uh, that District Improvement Plan is, for lack of a better word, the strategic plan for the district. And so that includes a number of objectives, goals, initiatives, uh, for the district, which ultimately are the superintendent's goals and initiatives and objectives, uh, for which we have, uh, the ability to, uh, evaluate him on. And we also have the District Improvement Plan Progress Monitor, that also is in your email. Uh, that is a running document that has some data in it, uh, that, uh, provides information about how the school system is doing on a number of different metrics. That is not where the end of the information that you can consider, uh, is. Uh, the superintendent has the prerogative to submit information to us, to provide, uh, information so that we can, uh, include his voice in his own, uh, evaluation, and, uh, all members of our campus community, campus, school community, and, uh, town have the prerogative to provide information. So, to those, uh, here in attendance and watching the video perhaps tomorrow, uh, you have the ability also, uh, to provide information to the school system, a school committee, similar to the way that Ms. Cast mentioned a moment ago. Uh, all of our emails are publicly available, David's is being produced in the next couple of days, uh, and so, of course, you are welcome to provide information that helps us complete that, uh, summative evaluation.
Mister Chair.
Karen.
I did not, I did receive the, um, superintendent email, didn't receive the, um, district emails about the, um, district improvement plan or anything.
Uh, all four attachments were on one email.
Oh, were they? Okay. Thank you.
So this is the beginning, this is the public announcement about the beginning of the summative evaluation of the evaluation, of the superintendent. Um, this will be now a multiple-week process. Uh, we have the prerogative tonight to set a timeline, if we would like to, uh, or we can set that timeline at our next meeting. Happy to take the, excuse me, the, uh, interests of the committee members, if there is one. We also have the prerogative to, uh, set that timeline at our open meeting at our future meeting.
Just a question that I'd like to, maybe the Chair could, uh, answer. Um, as you know, I just came on board tonight, um, so, in terms of, um, me completing this evaluation, um, is it procedure to abstain from, from something like this?
Yes, so the state guidelines for, uh, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education allow all committee members that served during the evaluation period to assess the superintendent based on their term of, uh, service. So that means that, um, uh, he's not on the board anymore, so I forgot his name, Larry.
Larry.
Uh, Larry, there's a circle of trust here, people, nobody tells Larry. Uh, Larry Murphy, who was on the board during this evaluation period, has the prerogative to evaluate, you also have the prerogative to evaluate, um, and his evaluation will be bound by the amount of time that he was on the board, and your evaluation will be bound by the amount of time you're on the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Mister Chair.
Greg.
Um, I guess just for, for moving ahead, I would, uh, move that we put discussion of this, um, off to our next meeting, that we table it. If that's the appropriate motion. Or that we put it, or we simply put it under a new agenda, on future agenda items.
Greg.
Uh, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, I suggest that we put this, uh, topic on our future agenda items and discuss it at a future meeting.
Second, if we need a.
I'm, I'm sorry, but, go ahead. You second it.
Did you actually make a motion? I don't think you need to.
No, I just made the suggestion that we.
Yeah, so what that means is that, uh, this will continue to be an agenda item on our agenda going forward until at least our next meeting, if not our next two or three meetings, during which our next meeting, we will set the timeline. So we need to establish a timeline in which we will complete that evaluation, accept information to support that evaluation, and we'll do that on June first.
Mister Chair.
Karen.
We've been talking about this evaluation now for, like, three months. Can we get it done? I'm sorry, but, I mean, can we please get it done? And, and not, 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 you know, not for nothing, but, I mean, it has nothing to do with what's going on right now, but I, I feel like we've been talking about Thad's evaluation for two years. Um, no offense, Thad, but, I mean, we really have. Um, so I, I really would like to set a deadline, um, and, and I realize Alicia isn't here, but you know what, she could've called in. Um, you know, it, it's at this point that I think we need to have a deadline, we need to give ourselves a date to be, just like a book report, just like the teachers give a book report, you have a due date, we need a due date, because this is just dragging out. And I need, I need to have a deadline for this, at this point, because I think we're just, people are waiting for things from us, and, and we, we just keep saying, oh, it's coming, and it's never coming, so I think we need a due date at this point, so. I would say, instead of putting it on future agenda items, we just set an agenda and say, we're gonna do it by this date, even if it's by the last June meeting, let's just set that date, please.
Would anyone like to suggest a timeline? Uh, thank you, that's a good suggestion. Um, the, uh, evaluation materials have only been available since May third, uh, so we are, oh, you know, a couple weeks into.
I'm sorry, but they actually were available when I came home from the mass conference. I brought them to the school committee and actually presented them to you.
Uh, sorry, I may have misspoke, uh, Ms. Cast. The District Improvement Plan was only provided to you on May third.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so, uh, happy to set a timeline, uh, we have meetings on June first and June fifteenth. Uh, we also have a meeting on, uh, July sixth, so happy to take any suggestions on timeline from any of the members.
I would like to say that we should have this done by June fifteenth. I would make a motion that we complete this by June fifteenth, and we need to have a We need to have an open hearing. I, I know that we keep having public comments, but we need to have an actual hearing as part of that, um, superintendent evaluation, if you're not aware of that. Um, hopefully you are.
Everyone, everyone supported?
Go ahead.
Uh, June fifteenth, that's not too long, that's, you know, still four weeks?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, so the timeline for our evaluation will be, uh, from now until June fourteenth, uh, fifteenth, excuse me. That gives us the opportunity to collect information, uh, because our, uh, school committee members will be completing their evaluation materials likely before June fifteenth. Uh, anyone that is interested in providing information, whether it is from the public or from Mr. King, uh, we would encourage you to do so sooner rather than later, uh, but the period is now officially open now that we have had this initial meeting.
Mister Chair.
So please feel free to do so. Angelina.
All right, I just had a question. Um, as a technical member of school committee, am I allowed to complete a report or an evaluation?
I suspect you are, but let me get that answer for you officially, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think.
Other questions regarding the superintendent's evaluation? Okay, old business, I don't think we have any. Future agenda items, we have the Special Education Update, which the Committee asked for and will be provided soon. Other future agenda items?
Mister Chair.
Karen.
Um, the Special Education Update, can we take that off future agenda items and set a date for that, too, please?
I suspect that update would likely be delivered by the, um, what's her title, Director of Pupil Services?
By Mass Huro, yes.
Yep. Do we, um, know if June first, do we know if that would be possible, or can, how about this, can we say we will inquire, ask you to inquire as to when that presentation will be available, preferably June first?
Preferably June first.
Absolutely, I'll confirm with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, other future agenda items?
Oh, Mister Chair.
Greg.
Um, for discussion, I, I don't think this is something we need to get done right away, but, um, discussion on setting a date for the, uh, school committee retreat.
Okay, yep. Other future agenda items? Okay, very good. Uh, that brings us to closing member comments, and we will start with Karen.
Um, before we get to closing member comments, I just want to make one note that you promised to let Angelina make a motion tonight, so can we let her make the motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, first of all, to all the students and parents and babies and everybody cute that was here, you're all cute, too, don't get me wrong. Um, thank you, thank you for coming, thanking, thank you for voicing everything that we need to hear.
Thank you for being all there, stick up for us, and for the point, thank you both.
Um, to the teachers and the, um.
I have a question. I, I missed the first half, but I have some questions, am I too late?
I'm so sorry, um, we'll, we'll be around afterwards if you'd like to ask us questions individually.
I want to know why the kids can't go to the bathroom when they need to, in any school. I want to know why.
I'm so sorry, Ms., I can't accept your questions, apologies for that.
Okay, because I think it has something to do with my son, so I think everybody in this room deserves to know, so I would love to speak with all of you after.
People love to meet with you.
Because it's a big problem.
Karen, go ahead.
I would cede my time to her.
I, I'm happy for that, go ahead.
I'm, I'm happy to give my time to her, I really am. I, I'm just saying, if she has something to say, I'd rather hear from her. My closing comments aren't as important as her work.
Are there other closing comments from the Board?
If I may, thank you, Mister Chair. So I must, uh, say that this was, been a very enlightening first meeting for me, and, um, I've got, uh, a lot of notes that I took from all of you eloquent speakers who spoke from the heart and spoke on behalf of not only your own children, but all of our children, because we're in this together. And, um, so I just wanted to say that, you know, continue to be, uh, involved, you know, democracy is an active participation, you can't be on the sidelines, you gotta be on the field, so, um, I'm looking forward to my email getting up and running and getting filled pretty quickly, and, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy and honored, uh, to serve on the school committee for here in town.
Greg?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, first of all, I'd like to apologize to Ms. Lassard for yelling at her when she tried to interrupt me, I don't normally lose my temper like that, but emotions were running a little high tonight, and I'd like to apologize to you, first of all.
Thank you, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I just, I'm sorry for having this.
I'd also like to thank, I think Mr. Le Blank hit the nail on the head when he said that the problems that do exist in this district, no district is perfect, but the problems that do exist in this perfect are only going to be solved not by this committee and not by parents alone, but by everybody working together to solve the problem. We're not your enemy, and you're not our enemy. You know, I've been on this committee for a total of eleven years, and I can count on my two hands easily the number of emails that I've gotten from parents over the years expressing concern about anything going on in, in the district, and I, I know I'm not the only one who's had school committee experience that can say the same thing. We appreciate the fact that you have come here and let us know what your concerns are. Email us, call us, uh, lasso us in the Cumberland Farms, or the Family Dollar, or wherever you see us to talk about things, I'll talk to anybody, I'm not, I'm an easy guy to get along with, believe it or not. And, um, as far as any statements that, um, there's only one or two people on this committee that, that care about the future of the kids in this district, I'd like to, um, take exception to that. Uh, Mr. Murphy spent many years on this committee, nobody joins this committee, I certainly haven't served eleven years on this committee because I don't give a damn about the district or the kids that are in it. My own kids were in this district, my grandkids are in this district. I'm not ignoring what's going on, nobody on this panel is ignoring what's going on. You can shake your head and laugh if you want, but just because we might have a disagreement doesn't mean we don't care. There's more than one way of looking at things, it's not just your way, and it's not just my way. By working together, we can get things done. So make your voices heard, but, you know, not just here, email us, call us, speak to us, because we do want to take care of your kids as well as our kids and every kid in this community. Thank you.
I need the transparency.
I will keep my calm and brief. Um, I appreciate all of you coming out and voicing your concerns. I hope all of you will come see some of the events that we have coming up, um, in the district. I know I listed a lot of them, and it might have sounded a little drawn out, but there are a lot of good events happening that I wish to see all of your participation at, um, just to celebrate some of the good things that are happening in this district and the students that are working hard. Um, and I'd also, yeah, I just appreciate the outcome and the turnout, I think that if we had this type of participation, um, at all our school committee meetings, I feel like that's ideal, like, hearing your voices and hearing your, um, passion for your kids and your drive to want to make this district better is encouraging. Um, and I'm sad that this is one of my last meetings, because I, hearing this kind of participation and the concerns makes me just want to get involved more. Um, so I just thank all of you for coming and sitting here with us for this long meeting.
When is your last meeting?
Next meeting is my last meeting.
We'll all be here.
We'll have a party.
Thank you, Angelina.
Everybody should go to Promenade tomorrow just to see Angelina dressed up.
Uh, thank you, everyone, uh, thank you for coming out, thank you again for speaking, uh, it is great for us to hear your comments, uh, and, uh, and we appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, too, uh, that was here tonight, including our board members, our newly-elected board members, uh, and, uh, and, uh, I'm sure we will have Alicia back sometime in the future. Um, it has, uh, it is always a pleasure to serve, uh, our town. Uh, we do this because we care, uh, we do this because we care about not only education but also Winchenden, uh, and I'm glad to hear everyone's voices tonight. Thank you, everybody, and happy to take a motion.
Mister Chair.
Elena.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, Karen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, it is unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1774.83]